Good morning, everyone. It is June 24th. We're going to call our meeting to order. Commissioner Tarzwell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's do roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I am here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trass.
I am here. All right, let's move on to item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
We do. We received open space application from POA John Gorman for 1825 Southeast Bloomfield Road. Received notice of special occasion license application from Allen Community Association and Hoodkamout Salmon Enhancement Group. Received 2025 Mesa County Quarter Two Report from the Economic Development Council. Received Advisory Board Application from Lisa Bishop for the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees. And received letter from Taylor Shellfish Company regarding a new floating oyster bag farm.
Great, thank you. And we have no announcements or anything? Wow. All right, moving on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for citizen input. We have a 15-minute max. We ask that it's three minutes per person and our Travis will be monitoring that. We ask that you only talk about things that are not on the action agenda. Those will be saved for later. So let's start in the room. Do we have anyone that would like to stand up and say anything in the room?
Why am I always first?
Because I know you're always going to talk.
Dean Geo, lifelong Mesa County member. Thank you for allowing me to be here. So it's only three hot-button topics for me today. I want to hit on the ETS truck. Brewer Park has been in the process of being cleared out, so now they're living on the sidewalks, which creates another issue with the sidewalk ordinance, but that's a city issue, not yours. So it's good to be you. But that truck needs to be moved. So in my mind, that is the county commissioners directing the county manager. County manager is directing the department head, Dave Wyndham, Todd Parker, to get that truck moved. We haven't, you know, and there's multiple people that have been requesting this, and it's kind of getting to be past the request point. It's kind of getting to be the demand point. We do not need that truck downtown creating more negative behavior of what we're trying to clean up. It needs to be moved into a professional medical-type setting, like up in the professional area to the right-hand side across the street from the hospital, somewhere else. But it needs to be gone. And there's other individuals that are on board with that, and we will be continuing to push it until it is moved. And I just, I don't stop. So I would appreciate it if we could just do it sooner than later. Next topic I wanted to talk about with the park being cleaned up, there's a joint effort that needs to be directed between the county and the city. And I know that there are some good public works, you know, correlations between the two people. There's a lot of good that goes on with that. I would really like to see that stepped up on how we're doing and we're working these encampments, because when you push somebody out of town, they're going to go to the county. And there's all kinds of RVs and campsites that pop up or expand. We all know about Daniels Road out in the Agate area. I was at the Republican meeting last night at the PUD, and there's a lady that was there that was almost in tears that she's been requesting it for at least a year, if not longer. What have we got to do to help her? We should be able to help our community when it comes to that, and everybody knows about it. You know, Ryan Spurling knows about it. You guys all know about it. There was the death of an infant out there. There's EPA issues. I mean, what is it going to take to do a seizure on that, to start filing the paperwork? If I were to do a public request on that, where are we at with that? No more talk. Again, it just needs to be done. I did a public records request before Mark Neary left on Community Lifeline and the funding that was given to them for the infrastructure on their sprinkler systems to the tune of about $70,000. I've yet to see any response on that. So once that building sells, then I want that funding replaced to the taxpayers, especially if it was... What? Especially if that was tied to the grant. I would like to see that money back to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? All right. No one else in the room? Let's go into the Zoom room. Do we have anyone in the Zoom room that would like to address the commission? All right, not seeing anyone. Let's move on to item six. Adoption of Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of today's agenda as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion passes. Item number seven, Approval of Minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the minutes from June 9th, June 16th, and briefing minutes from June 10th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Aye, well, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the June 9th and June 16th, 2025 briefing minutes and the June 10th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item number eight. This is our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the action agenda. Items can remove for a separate discussion or vote. And Commissioner Tarzwell, if you could, items 8.1 through 8.4. Commissioner Netherland, 8.5 through 8.9. And I'll take the remainder.
Madam Chair, item number 8.1, Approval of Warrants and Treasurer Electronic Remittance. Claims Clearing Fund Warrant Number 811-3092 through 811-3303 in the amount of $1,197,989.86. Direct deposit fund warrant number 116-876 through 117-286 in the amount of $961,618.71. Salary Clearing Fund Warrant Number 700-8935 through 700-8971 in the amount of $1,273,761.37. Item 8.2, Approval of the Letter of Support for the Mason County Economic Development Council's EDC Grant Application to the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Farmers Market Promotion Program, FMPP. Item 8.3, Approval of the Mason County Commissioners 2026 Preliminary Budget Preparation Guidelines. Item 8.4, Approval of the Rates for Mason County's 2026 Annual Budget and Internal Cost allocations, Information Technology, Unemployment, and Motor Pool. And approval for the Chair and/or County Administrator to sign for the order of 11 replacement vehicles as presented in the 2026 motor pool rates.
Madam Chair, item number 8.5 reads, Approval to Renew the Shelton Family YMCA Actively Changing Together Act, ACT, program in Mason County in the amount of $20,000. Approval is set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025, at 9:15 a.m. to consider the five 2024 open space applications as recommended by the Assessors Office and Community Development. Item number 8.7, Approval for the Chair to Sign the Interlocal Agreement, the ILA, with the City of Shelton for Mason County Public Works to provide roadway utility maintenance and installation within city limits. Item number 8.8, Approval for Public Works to Award and Execute Contract in the amount of $143,941.27 with first onsite out of Kent, Washington, for the Belfort Water Reclamation Facility Restoration Project. And item number 8.9, Approval for Public Works to Write Off the following uncollectible debts, $13,781.18 from Utilities and Waste Management Fund Accounts deemed uncollectible after all collection efforts have been exhausted, and $39,437.34 from the road fund traffic incident claims, which are no longer legally collectible due to the expiration of the three-year statute of limitations per RCW 4.16.080.
Item 8.10, Approval of the Resolution Adopting the Mason County Public Works Utility and Waste Management Water Leak Credit Policy. Item 8.11, Approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with ASME Local 1504, amending the previous MOU, adding range 24 to the pay scale. Item 8.12, Approval of the MOU with ASME Local 1504, adopting the reclassifications of the listed positions for the Treasurer's Office effective June 1st, 2025. Item 8.13, Approval to Submit a Proposal to the Washington State Noxious Weed Control Board for fiscal year 26, Class A and B, designate noxious weed eradication programs requests for proposals. Holy cow. Item 8.14, Approval of the Request for Proposals for Director of Tourism Development for Mason County for 2026 through 2027. And request for proposals for services and support tourism and/or cultural attractions in Mason County for 2026. Having read through our action agenda, are there any items you would like to have removed for separate discussion or vote?
Amen.
No? I would like item 8.5 removed for separate discussion and vote. All right, anyone in the audience like anything removed for separate discussion or vote? Anyone in the Zoom room? Like anything removed for separate discussion or vote? All right. Hearing none.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda with the removal of item number 8.5, which will be removed for a separate vote. And just a few comments if it's seconded.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda as presented with the exception of item 8.5 for discussion and vote. Holy cow. What'd you do to me, Randy?
I have that effect on people.
It could be Pat, I don't know. Could be Travis, too, I don't know.
I tried a new cologne.
That's what it is. All right. Any discussion?
All right, Madam Chair, I want to thank our public works for the hard work they did on that leak situation. This gives the ability for us to write off if there's a big event or some other event. It also gives the ability, they can do once every three years, but if it's a special exception, something really big happens, we have the ability to bring it to the commission for another separate look at it. But this gives a protection of the citizens, because sometimes things happen, and the cost can be huge. But they weren't able to do it. They were able to try and wiggle a few things here to help people out, but now there's an actual policy. Thank you for all the hard work that you went in for that. I also wanted to give another thank you out to everybody that worked hard on this MOU and the work with ASME. It was a long drawn-out process. It took a lot to get there, but it got it done. And there's some people out there that need some pats on the back for that. So please, if you don't mind, share it amongst your offices. And other than that, that's what I have.
Madam Chair, Loretta would like to make a comment. I thought I'd recognize her, if it's okay with you.
Sure. But you have to go up there.
Loretta Swanson, Pub Works and Utilities and Waste Management. I just also wanted to thank Tim Whitehead and the prosecutor's review on the leak credit policy as well, because even though unexpected things happen and we want to be fair to our ratepayers, we also need to make sure that we aren't gifting of public funds and giving away free water. And so definitely appreciate Tim's thorough review and making sure we're on solid ground on our policy.
Thank you. Ready to go? All right, ditto the comments. And I do want to recognize Lisa in the room. We're going to miss you.
The incredible Lisa.
But we're also very pleased with the choice.
What was that?
We're also very pleased with our new choice.
I'm very pleased with your choice as well.
All right, Commissioners. I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. All right, item 8.5, Approval to Renew the Shelton Family YMCA actively changing together.
What's in there?
Not enough, let me tell you. Program in Mason County in the amount of $20,000. I need something more.
Yeah.
Dave, you don't have to come up and present it if you don't want to, but you can give just a brief summary if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely. Dave Wyndham, Mason County Public Health Human Services. So the YMCA came to us last year. We've done a lot of talking about what actually motivates change around obesity, diabetes, or as I call it, diabetesity, because you really can't separate the two things. And we've looked at ways to modify behavior through media. And really, the thing that has always worked best is the one-on-one, working with people, educating people face-to-face, eyeball-to-eyeball, teaching them and leading them through a process and getting them into the habit of trying new things. And this is what the YMCA has partnered with us before on. And that's what this is, is to work with families, to learn how to prepare meals, what to shop for, how to get active, how to do family programs together to keep the family active and healthy eating. So they've been great to work with. They did it last year, and we're going to continue. We'd like to continue with this program this year.
Great. Okay. So I like the program. Just want to say that first. I appreciate that. Any questions for... And I'm the one that asked for this to be removed, just because I want to make sure that everyone understands what this actually does and to also maybe add a stipulation. So I would say that... And this has to be renewed every year, right?
Right.
And so at the end of this year, I would like for us to, or for you guys to bring back statistics. Part of it is memberships. And so I'd like to know, I'd like you to track and make sure that those memberships are used and that they're not just going to pay for a 13-week class. And I'd also like to know, I said that it's a 70% activity or participation. So I'd like to make sure that that's tracked, too. And I just want to know that, like we stated before, that the money that we are investing in our community that has been invested or has been entrusted to us, that it goes out there and we're doing the right thing for our community. And I do know, and this was one of the programs that FPHS, when the funding was cut, this pot of money was reduced by $93,000.
Yeah, $93,000, yeah. So we may not have the money to do it again next year, just the way FPHS is falling out. So it's been quite a discussion the last month, so.
Yeah, it has.
So what you're asking for is a motion with an addition of a requirement to share information regarding actual usage and other membership...
Stats?
Statistics.
And other...
Yeah, I think probably it would be just absolutely tickled to come in and do that, so.
Okay.
Yearly, right? Will you make the motion? Okay. Madam Chair, I move for approval to renew the Shelton Family YMCA Actively Changing Together ACT program in Mason County in the amount of $20,000 with a requirement to show and provide information regularly regarding actual usage, membership, and statistics yearly.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve to renew the Shelton Family YMCA Actively Changing Together program in Mason County in the amount of $20,000 with a requirement to... Let's see if I can get this right. Report yearly with the... With the... Hold on. With the statistics for memberships and participation. Correct? Good enough? All right, any discussion?
Just a comment. It's funny that we're talking about this now. When I first came in, Washington State University had a program where they were actually teaching people how to cook using like beans and rice and things that we don't do anymore. I'd love to see something like that come back, because I thought it was very successful, actually. That was a long time ago, guys. That was 13 years ago.
All right. Thank you, Dave. I am going to go ahead and call for the votes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Great. Thank you guys so much. Let's move on to item number nine, Other Businesses. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to address the commission?
That would be me.
Yay. I was hoping you would say that would be me.
Good morning. Lisa Fraser, Mason County Treasurer. I've had a lot of firsts in my life in the last 25 years as Mason County Treasurer. I can count my first Commissioners' meeting, my first Finance Committee meeting, my first Audit Committee meeting, lots of firsts. And I continue to have firsts up until June 30th, when I'm retired. But today is my last meeting here with the commission, and I wanted to say thank you to them for their support at the Treasurer's Office and their continued support at the Treasurer's Office to all of the other elected officials in the county that I've worked with and all of the department heads. I will miss you all. It is very bittersweet. And it's been kind of a weepy week for me. Very emotional. But I'm very proud of the service that I've had over my 45 years as tenure here at the county. And I hope in the future you'll see me out in the community still volunteering my time. And that's very important to me, both me and my family. So I'm not going anywhere. I just won't be here. So, and I will continue to mentor Brittany as she wishes. And so you may see me coming in and out eventually. But thank you all again. Again, I'm very proud of what I've been able to do for the county, the public, the taxpayers. And I know that will continue with the staff that's currently in place and the new staff that comes on. So thank you very much.
Hold on a moment. Don't go anywhere, huh?
Madam Treasurer, yes, you've been here for a lot of firsts. You were talking about the Audit Committee, for example. I also remember you being strong enough to change and work with different rules in order to change things when we were falling apart, not because of you. It was past commissions at the time. There was an internal war with everybody, and it took some real leadership in order to separate us out and start to go in a whole new direction. And that's definitely you. You've been a benefit to this county. The amount of knowledge that locks out the door with you is incredible, and nobody's going to understand it. If you haven't served the committee with her, the problem that you have is you sit there and you know she's leaving. And then when she speaks, you're like, shit, shit. I'm serious, because that's going to be really hard. You pick somebody that has a lot of experience, and I believe she's going to do incredible. Luckily for us, you're going to stick around and help her to do it, because there's just too much knowledge for you to ever pass off too quickly. But you have definitely left this county better than you took it, without doubt. You are incredible, and it's been an honor, honestly, to serve with you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you for your service.
Awesome. I miss you like crazy. Your fun, your knowledge. When we were talking about debts and things like that, you helped me understand more about how the county finances were run. And I appreciate that so much. So you've been Mysme, and I hope that others will. You will. I'm sure you've got speed dial, right?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. But Brittany's going to be, she's going to be awesome. And appreciate you bringing her name forward, or the committee bringing her name forward. But she's going to do a great job, but hope to see you more at Bob's.
Yes. I will be there. On occasion, anyway. Thank you again, everybody. Like I said, it takes a village, it takes a city, it takes, you know, a family to make this work. I mean, it's not just one person. So I appreciate all of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm curious. Does anybody in this room actually still have speed dial? Or don't do it? None of us are showing our age.
Oh, no. It's speed dial. It's called favorites.
Yeah, so favorites, yes. The speed dial used to be push number six. Automatically goes to such-and-such.
Now it's just favorites.
Now it's just favorites.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still have speed dial.
All right, do we have any more department heads or electeds that would like to say anything? Right? Right? Anyone in our Zoom room, any department heads or electeds that would like to speak? All right. It is time we can move on to our public hearings. So the first one is 10.1. It's Public Hearing to Inform Citizens of the Availability of Funds and Eligible Uses of the State Community Development Block Grant and Receive Comments on Proposed Activities Specifically Funding the Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, and Thurston Counties, As Well As Receive Comments on the 2022-25 Program and Ask Staff to Come Forward.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jennifer Byerly with Support Services. And Mason County coordinates with the CAC on an annual basis to apply for, receive, and provide services through a Public Services CDPG grant administered by the Washington State Department of Commerce. This year's allotment is $105,000. And as part of the application process, Mason County is required to solicit public input on the proposed activities and services on the proposed activities and services to be provided, as well as receive comments on current programming. The citizen input is to be solicited at a published public hearing. So are there any questions or comments on this process?
So is this the public hearing for them to participate? Because it's not spelled out very well this time. Is this the one that they're supposed to come and participate in? Are you expecting action after today?
Oh, I mean, this is just so that we can apply for this. There will be a public hearing as well to close out the old grant, so they're two separate public hearings.
And is this, is this the time that we can take public comment?
Yes.
All right, any questions? First up.
Yeah, still, is there an action that you're looking for at the end of this? Because it's, the way it's written here with the front of me is I have an action to create an action of creating a public hearing. That's what's in front of me.
No, I don't think we're looking for any action on this. It's just so that we can apply for the grant.
And receive the public comment.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for staff from the audience? Anyone in the Zoom room have questions? All right. Looks like nothing so far. Thank you. All right, so this is the time that we set aside for public comment or public, yeah, we'll go public comment first. Do we have anyone in the room that would like to comment?
Ten point two.
I'm ten point one. Yeah. Ten. So do we have anyone that would like to provide public testimony? Well, this is easy. All right, well, we've had our hearing, we've had no public comment or public testimony. So now you just go forward and apply, right? Okay? You're a little confused.
Something's wrong in this process, all the years I've been here. Because we're having a public hearing, but there's no action for the public hearing at all. And I'm wondering if there still should be an action for us to apply for, but that normally could just happen in a, on a, on our action agenda. So I'm a little confused. So should we at least have a motion to apply for the funds?
Yeah, we can do that, just to be safe.
I have a feeling there's no reason to have a hearing if there's not an action at the end of the hearing of some sorts. So Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and just do it and, so we can go ahead and make sure we don't have any mistakes. Madam Chair, I move that we allow staff to go after the Community Development Block Grant as proposed in the information we have here.
Second.
All right, can I clarify that just a little bit more in my reiteration?
Please.
This is a motion to approve that staff go forward to apply for the state Community Development Block Grant and and move the funding to the Community Action Council of Lewis, Mason, and Thurston Counties. Good?
If received.
If received, yes. All right. Any further comments? Discussion? All right. I will call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. And moving on to item ten point two. This is a public hearing to consider and approve the supplemental budget requests and budget transfers to the two thousand twenty-five budget. And ask Jen to come up and talk to us again.
So this is for the supplemental appropriations and amendments to the two thousand twenty-five budget. The net total of adjustments to two thousand twenty-five authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund is an increase of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And the net total of adjustments to two thousand twenty-five authorized expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund is a decrease of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. And the decrease is due to us changing the cash balances from budgeted amounts to actual amounts at one-one of two thousand twenty-five. So on the budget amendment detail, the first sheet, line one, shows the changing the budgeted beginning fund balance to actual cash amounts. So there's no revenue or expenditure change on that line. The detail is shown on the second, the detail sheet there. All of the line one entries are the changes to cash. So if you have any questions, let me know. So on the expenditure and revenue changes for the general fund, in the auditor's office, there's a three thousand dollar increase to expenditures for financial services, warrant, stock, and tax forms. In emergency management, there's an increase to revenue and expenditures of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for an SHSP grant agreement. In the Parks and Trails Department, there's an increase to expenditures of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred, twenty-five dollars for a feasibility study for Mason Lake Park. In the Sheriff's Office, there's an increase to expenditures of thirty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for jail body scanner warranty and jail video storage. And so that's the total for the general fund, which again is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five in an increase to expenditures. So moving on to the other funds, the Sales and Use Tax Fund, number one oh three, there's an increase to expenditures of twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars for the City of Shelton Award earned and paid by the city in two thousand twenty-four and reimbursed by the county in two thousand twenty-five as per the contract. In the Road Fund, one oh five, there is an increase to expenditures of one million dollars. And that's due to moving the new road project funds out of ending fund balance and into Matlock Expanded Project as briefed on March thirty-first of this year. In the Sheriff's In the Sheriff's Narcotics Investigation Fund, one forty-two, there's a decrease to expenditures of seven thousand, five hundred and ten dollars due to changing the beginning fund balance. In the American Rescue Plan Act, Fund, one fifty-five, there's a decrease to expenditures of one million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars, again due to changing the beginning fund balance to actual cash amounts. In Law Library, Fund, one sixty, there's an increase to expenditures of one thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars, again due to the beginning fund balance change. In the Treasurers O and M Fund, one eighty, there's an increase to revenue of fifty-three, fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, and again due to the beginning fund balance change. In Veterans Assistance Fund, one ninety, an increase to expenditures of forty-one thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars due to the beginning fund balance change. Mason Lake Management Fund, one ninety-four, an increase to expenditures of seventy thousand, nine hundred, twenty-seven dollars. In Spencer Lake Management Fund, one ninety-five, a decrease of seven thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars. And Island Lake Management Fund, one ninety-nine, an increase to expenditures of one thousand, three hundred, eighty-one dollars. And again, those are all due to the beginning fund balance changes. In North Bay Sewer Utility Fund, four oh three, there's a decrease to revenue and expenditures of one hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and that was moved to Beards Cove Water Fund, four twelve, for the Rochester NBCI grant, which was reallocated to the Beards Cove Larson Project. In Belfair Sewer Fund, four thirteen, an increase to expenditures of one hundred twenty thousand dollars to reallocate operator salaries to the Belfair Sewer from other funds. In Unemployment Fund, five oh two, there's an increase to expenditures of eighty-five thousand, two hundred, sixty-five dollars, and that's due to the beginning fund balance, the cash change. So are there any, any questions with any of that? I know it's a lot of number reading.
A lot of numbers.
Yeah.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience have questions for staff? No, anyone in the Zoom room have questions for staff? All right.
Thank you.
You may sit. All right, this is the time we set aside for public comment. Any public, would any public like to comment? Any public in the Zoom room like to comment? All right, how about public testimony? Anybody who would like to testify on this? Nobody in the room? Anyone in the Zoom room like to testify on this? Nope. All right. Let's move on to Commissioner deliberation or a possible motion.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the resolution for the supplemental appropriations and amendments to the two thousand twenty-five budget. The net total of the adjustments to the two thousand twenty-five authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund is an increase of one hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars and a net total of adjustments to the two thousand twenty-five authorized expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund is a decrease of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for supplemental appropriations and amendments to the two thousand twenty-five budget. The net total of adjustments to two thousand twenty-five authorized expenditure appropriations in the general fund is an increase of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And the net total of adjustments to the two thousand twenty-five authorized expenditure appropriations in funds other than the general fund is a decrease of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars. Any discussion? No? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a tough job. All right, let's move on to item number eleven, board calendars and reports. Commissioner Tarzwell, if you could go first, Commissioner Netherlands, and I'll follow.
Well, let's see, later today, we have an open house for our District Ten Courthouse, building ten over there. So anybody who hasn't had a chance to go see the new courthouse, you should, you should do that. It's quite impressive. Maintenance staff and Kelly did a great job in getting that prepared. It looks beautiful, so that, that should help in a lot of ways over there. A lot less cramped in the courthouse. Tomorrow, I have Housing and Behavioral Health meeting at nine AM. Two more meetings. Then we have, we have two events, which Rainan and I might be going to. There's a, it's called SWAT, the Skokomish Valley Water, yeah, watershed thing. Anyway, there'll be one at two o'clock, which is going to be traipsing around through the Skokomish Valley, walking through the, through the water, which I probably won't partake in that part. And then at five o'clock, there is an open house out at the Union Fire Hall in Union, obviously. Oh, let's see, what else do I have? And we have a retirement party over in the jail training room. One of our officers, a meeting with Katrina Wilson tomorrow at two-thirty. And we have Lisa's retirement party on Friday. So that's, that's pretty much what's going on with me these, the next, next few days.
So before I even start with money, I want to apologize. What I was doing was trying to find the information. Something came up this morning that is very important to some of us around this community. This building was just named after the Hunter family. We had William Hunter and his grandfather, father, that both were commissioners and we just named the building. His wife passed away. And it was important to me that I find the date to be able to announce to people that on the twelfth of July, they will be having a gathering of people at the Presbyterian Church in Shelton. The woman is an absolute leader in the community in a way that people wouldn't even imagine. You know, you always hear about this strength behind the throne type thing or whatever. I assure you, she was more than just a little strength. That woman was something special and spectacular. If you ever got a chance to meet her, you could feel the power and the strength of this woman. She was a true homesteader type of person. And then you, when you went to their store or you went to any of their functions, you felt like you're part of the family because that's how they were. And with that, my condolences go out to the family. I will be there at that. And again, I apologize for the noise, but I thought it was important that everybody know about it and hear about it. And I don't, I got to figure a way to where Facebook doesn't automatically just come on, I guess, when that happens. So with that, I also wanted to point out that a couple of different things that we've had, we've had some utility workshops together where we were at the same places. We had executive sessions, stuff like that. We also, at one point, me and Pat were at a political function of which we said hello to each other. And I also said to him that the owner would like to meet you, so I went over and let him know that. Other than that, no business or anything took place. Coming up, after this, I have to leave and go to the government chambers, North Mason Chamber Government Affairs meeting, come back for the court's open house and meet with the superintendent of the North Mason School District. Kilkyn Alcorian Council is having that open house out in Union, I'll be there for that and we'll probably both be there. I have Unification Day coming up as well, Rotary, Law Enforcement and Firefighters Board Meeting, and I'm sure I got a bunch of other stuff. But for now, I think that's all I have to worry about.
For now. All right, I also want to comment on Carol. It was so, it was kind of funny because we're all standing out there and, and I think it was Bill that was up there speaking. And he was, he may have been droning on a bit. And Carol goes, that's enough. And so he stopped. So you know who, he respected her well. He definitely respected her. All right, so tomorrow, we have a special WASAC LSC meeting to talk about the changes in the courts and our public defenders. A Turning Point Board meeting, Public Works Board, special meeting to talk about our lobbyist, and then an executive committee meeting for Public Works Board after that. Patsy's retirement is tomorrow, is Thursday, Patsy Robinson's. So make sure that everybody comes by to say hello to her. Have a Pac Mountain Consortium meeting, and then a Turning Point Special Events Committee meeting. Lisa's retirement is on Friday, so three in one day, or three in one week. I am going to be taking a walk with Erica Marbet. She works for the Squaxon Tribe and she lives just right down the road from me and I always see her out there walking and I thought, how fun would that be? So she and I are going to go for a walk and talk, so it should be fun. Be back here for Monday briefings, WASAC Virtual Assembly. We have an emergency funding and grants meeting. Lisa Perry is also having a retirement. And I will be going to that. Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging for their council meeting, Sheriff's Breakfast, I'm going to try to make that on Thursday. Public Works Executive Committee meeting. Don't forget, Fourth of July is coming up, people. Get your fireworks, have some fun, get your hot dogs, maybe hamburgers, brats. And then we're back here for our briefing on the seventh. Anything else? No? Travis, anything? No? All right.
Madam Chair, move your turn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.